Terry, would you do real call?
Pat Rooney.
Here.
Alan Ward.
Here.
Don Maston.
Here.
Kathy Cox.
Here.
Nicole Cohen.
Here.
Join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. I can get a motion to review and accept the agenda for this work session.
So moved.
Second.
Alan Ward.
Here. Yes.
Pat Rooney.
Yes.
Don Maston.
Yes.
Kathy Cox.
Yes.
Nicole Cohen.
Yes.
And I think that I'm going to turn this over to Diana. She's going to get through it.
So we have our agenda set up for the January 17 session. The first area is the consent calendar. Excuse me. And in the first section of the consent calendar are the minutes from the December 20th board meeting. Which are eight pages. And we have the minutes from the December 2 special board meeting. From the December 8 special board meeting. December 12 special board meeting. December 13 meeting. Sorry, I saw two September, or December 13 meeting work session. There were two of them back there. Yes, okay. There we go. And that is the consent calendar as far as the minutes go. Then we have the personnel report. And 3.1.4 are the vouchers.
On the vouchers, there is 691. I'm looking at that correctly.
Building renewal rate?
Correct. Is that in the school facilities board?
I believe that it is. John, I'll have to double check.
Okay.
Does anybody know that? I can find that out.
Okay.
It's tagged on it. That's why I brought my little tiddies. Then we have the information in relation to the student activity fund. And the high school student activity fund. Several pages of those accounts. Item 3.1.5 is the gifts and donations. 3.1.6 is the assurance form for our teacher evaluation systems status. And I believe our evaluation system was sent to all the board members for your review. 3.1.7 is our approval of our district emergency response plans. You will notice that these are not in the agenda because those are confidential. They are available for the board to come in and review, but they are not public documents. Then moving on to the action agenda, starting with the green section, item 4.1. This is the request to approve a master teacher program grant. I know that there were some questions on this one. We do have Christie Olson here and Michelle Yussow who are helping to prepare the grant. Do you have questions as well?
Can I make some comments on this first? I appreciate the board members requesting that this item was tabled in the last board meeting. And the reason why that's important is I don't believe the information was adequate at the time in hindsight. And I take pride in what I attach my name to. I think the updated revision of the actual application and the information that's been provided is more consistent with what we normally do. So I wanted to recognize the board for addressing that and tabling it so that we had the time to correct those inadequacies. With that said, I think that this is extremely important. We're open to listening to your concerns and comments, and I think we have the people here to address those. And I believe this is a win for our district.
I'd like to address, and we had a meeting and everybody's been terribly cooperative. But not just for this grant. I'd like to mention the fact that nothing should come before the board, that we don't have the paperwork and documentation for. We shouldn't be asked to sign something that is blank. I think that's important for everybody, not just for this grant. If somebody has a proposition for the board, we should be able to look at it and review it and know everything that's contained within it. Along with that, I had some comments. I've talked to the superintendent and I know she's got her hand on this. I know she understands what it's all about. I think the benefits probably outweigh the negatives. But, as with all grants, we need to keep an eye on them. This is going to last for one, two, or three years. And as we fight the daily turmoil, the grant can sit there and wander away from us. And we have to be extremely careful not to allow it to do that. It bothers me a great deal, but the superintendent's got a hand on it, that we have only one academic coach in the district, and we're going to take them 50 percent of their time put on this grant. So the question that comes up is, do we need more academic coaches? Do we need us academic coaches? What's our personnel situation? It's not my place to make that decision, but it's something we have to look at. Also, we're taking a nationally recognized teacher out of the classroom for half of the time. And we need to ask ourselves, is this really the best move to make? I don't know. It's not my decision to make, but I think it's something we have to address. We have to look at it and ask ourselves that question. The sustainability of the grant, you know, we say it's sustainable, but after we've taken teachers and given them a stipend and the grant ends, will they, over a three-year period, have developed a budget, a personal situation that makes it not sustainable? If we can't afford to give them a raise to go with it? The biggest thing that I find, and like I said, I support this, the biggest thing I find is reporting. We had this same grant on a trial basis, and now we're going into the grant on a full-time basis. I feel that we should be expecting updates, at least every three to six months, on what the progress is, what problems have been found. And then at the end of each year, because each year is different, we should be looking at an after-action report that says, we performed this, but we found these areas that if we ever take this grant again, we should not have problems with. We should address it and be prepared so that each of those after-action reports can be used by someone down the road. They can look at it and see what the pluses and minuses are. The other thing, and this is just something that needs to be kept in our mind, is no matter who you are, if you've got two bosses or two jobs, there is a tendency to have a preference for one or the other. And you can be the greatest person in the world and get yourself swayed out of line. And the director is going to have to be extremely careful to keep an eye on this and just remind the participants, you have two obligations. Because if you get to being a mentor and you miss your teaching, all of a sudden you can be spending more time with your kids in the classroom and sort of letting the mentoring go down the road. If you love the mentoring, your kids may suffer. And we're going to have, the director's going to have to be extremely careful to keep an eye on that. Because no matter how good the people are, that tendency exists in all of us. But other than that, I don't see a big problem with this because, like I say, superintendent I've talked, she's got a handle on the majority of it. But these issues here, I would keep an eye on because I know from experience they'll cause you problems.
I can address the report aspect. We have built-in measurements into the actual application for accountability and sustainability. And I will oversee the grant. That's my responsibility. So I will do an update for the board probably every three to six months.
That after-action report is probably the most important one. Because you've got three separate years, so you have three distinct periods where you may not be trying to accomplish the same thing. So you need an after-action report each year so that somebody who takes this on the next time can look and say, oh, in year one, we might wind up with these problems. In year two, we might wind up with these problems.
I agree. And we will address that. The other comment that I'd like to make with regards to Jenny. Jenny is a nationally recognized teacher, highly skilled. She will still be in the classroom. But at the same time, we're trying to build leadership capacity. And you're taking a teacher who's highly skilled, and she's now going to be able to influence other teachers. And so those other teachers will benefit greatly from her expertise, and we don't have that capacity right now.
Oh, I agree. And I'm not talking just about Jenny. I just wanted to bring that point up because it's sort of like in the Marine Corps, we used to say, you don't take your best mechanic and make him an administrator because then you lose your best mechanic and you have a lousy administrator. I'm not saying that in this case that's true, but what I'm saying is it's something you have to be aware of and you have to keep your eye on.
Very much so. And we think we will benefit greatly across the board with her being involved in the mentoring piece. She's considered national, is she national board certified?
Yeah.
And a master teacher. The difference between those two, your Arizona master teacher actually allows those teachers to work more on the cognitive coaching piece with other teachers as mentors, to help our mentor program improve. Because you don't have a manual that you give a teacher through his mentoring and say, this is how you do it. And we don't have a consistent program to help in that area. And our mentor pool is shrinking simply because our retention rate is, we're in crisis mode in our school. So we don't have the luxury of being able to pull experienced teachers and say, here, we're going to assign this fifth-year teacher to a first-year teacher. We just don't have that.
No, I understand. Please don't think I'm being negative about this because I personally think it's a good grant. I just think there are pitfalls.
Yes.
That you've got to keep aware of. That's all I'm saying.
And I appreciate those because that has made us rethink some things and we reorganize some ideas. I would like, Christie, if you'd like to address any of the concerns maybe, because you are very much involved in this.
Brad, would you introduce her to the board?
Pardon me?
Would you introduce her to the board?
Yes. Christie Olson, she is academic coach at Nautilus. She is the one that has presented the grant, worked on it with me and other people. So she's got some background with this as well.
The master teacher grant was first developed in 2006 with three ideals. First, that we wanted to build teacher leadership. Second, that we wanted to support the newest members of our profession, and most importantly, we wanted to impact student achievement. At one point, our district did pilot the master teacher program at two elementary schools, Ore Grande and Nautilus. And I was the academic coach at Nautilus at that time. The Arizona master teacher who was at Ore Grande at that time has since left our district. When it came time to renew that grant for year two and expand it district-wide, we simply did not have the master teachers in our district to expand it district-wide. There were only two of us. And both of us had elementary experience. And so it just did not make sense at that time to expand district-wide to support middle school and high school teachers with our experience only at the elementary level. So that was part of the reason we let the grant, I guess you'd say, go after one year. I'm currently the only academic coach at the elementary level, and I know that, well, I don't know, but what I see from principals is that the principal's role has changed a lot over the last 10 years. And these principals, because of budgets, had to let their academic coaches transition into other positions or they had to let them go. And I can only imagine with everything on their plate, how taxing it is to also be the instructional leader at their school. And so this provides for those principals another layer of support with us being able to go and support at the schools that don't have academic coaches. Right now, 38 percent of our staff are between zero and two years of experience. And so like Brad said, we are in crisis mode. And we can recruit teachers until the cows come home, all day long. But we have got to retain our teachers. We've got to make this home, and we've got to provide a trajectory for leadership for them. And it doesn't necessarily mean leadership of becoming a building administrator or a director. It might be instructional leadership. And this grant provides that leadership trajectory to retain quality teachers in this district.
I have a question. So it looks as if you have 40 people, teachers identified to be mentors. Have you already identified who they are? Or do you just have that?
Those are our current mentors in the district right now who are already supporting new teachers.
Okay. Now, with 40 teachers, I'm aware that some of these mentors have had maybe at least two teachers to mentor.
Correct.
And a lot of these teachers have, you know, teaching six periods. They don't have a planning credit me. There's a burden. So is 40, is that adequate, or adequate number of mentors?
Every teacher in our district right now has a mentor. Do you know exactly if how many have two? I don't remember. There are only a couple that have two mentees per mentor. There has been times in the past where, and it's very rare, that a mentor would have up to three mentees, but that's only happened a couple of times.
Do those mentors get an extra stipend?
They don't get an extra stipend, but they are compensated either through, they have 301 as an option. This year they have the stipend, or they have two industry credits. So they were compensated for having the three.
Okay.
Or two.
One concern that I have, just having dabbled in this myself because we did have mentors, is some mentors take this very seriously. Some take it seriously, but they find they're pulled with other obligations and they don't devote the same amount of time. The last thing I want to use is the word evaluation for mentors. Mentors do not, in my opinion, need to be evaluated or they're not going to volunteer. But I do think they need feedback on how they're doing to motivate them to think, notice what other mentors are doing, and they see that they can do that too, that they're not so overwhelmed by it. So I don't know if you've thought about that or built that in to the model because that might take more time. But I think that's important, to give them positive feedback and have a way for them to communicate. And the other issue I have is something Al mentioned, and that is sustainability. Is it true that Title I monies can be used for the mentor program? Because I didn't think it could be.
Title II.
Title II.
Oh, I thought I must, I don't have my glasses because I don't wear glasses. So, okay, I must have misread that. Okay.
Speaking to mentor support, this year we were able to compensate mentors, and we are able to offer them, this year we're offering them five professional development sessions through the course of the year. So it gives them the opportunity to build that community, talk to other mentors, work through some of those barriers that they might have. So that seems to be a positive. And I think that the mentor group can be a tough crowd sometimes, and I wasn't sure how well they take, let's go to some meetings this year. But it seems to be very well received, and they really seem to learn from each other and appreciate that time together to work through those same kinds of barriers that they're all facing.
And just being chosen as a mentor is an honor in itself, a way of recognizing those teachers.
And this is the first time, this is the first year we were able to offer a stipend to mentors under Title II. So four attended those professional developments, and being a mentor, they're receiving a stipend of $400 for first one.
One thing I might just mention, you have to be very careful about, is it's easy to look at a mentor and say, this mentor's doing great and this mentor isn't. But there's a dynamic between the mentor and the teacher. And you have to be very aware of the fact that the one that's looking like they're doing such a wonderful job may be mentoring a wonderful teacher. And the other one may be working extremely hard, but just isn't making quite the same progress. And I just wanted to mention that.
Just like with students. Absolutely.
Who prepared the proposed budget on that? I have two questions on that. On the technology section of it, I see things listed there. Are we getting anything outside of what's listed there?
No. Are you referencing the technology on iPads, cameras, iPods?
Correct.
Those would be strictly for the pre-master teacher, so it would probably be three iPads, three cameras, three tripods, and then the Atlas subscription, but nothing other than those items listed. More of anything come out of any other budget.
How expensive was your estimate on that Atlas subscription?
The Atlas subscription, I actually brought that with me. It depends on where we go with it. If we go through three years, it's $56.70 for the three years. If we just put it at the first year, we have another option of $2,700 per year. Or the third option is if we have less than 50 years, it is $1,500 per year.
And then it notes a project director under professional development and travel?
Yes.
Who is the project director?
That would either be Mr. Gardner or I. We decided we would be called project directors.
That's all.
Pat, any questions? Anybody else?
No, I just think this is a reality because the principal cannot do everything. I mean, being a principal, it's nice to have layers of other people that are recognized as real good teachers. I can remember when I came out of the College of Education, you were thrust into the classroom and everything was theory. And the only way that you got better is if a person volunteered to sort of help you out, or you sought out that. And you know, I heard a thing the other night on TV and that there are a total of 2,165 teacher vacancies in the state of Arizona. And in the first month, 400 to 500 of them left the profession. And so what this does is in a very difficult situation, you're using the best to go ahead and help these new people. And that's going to hopefully help them stay in the district and stay in education. Because I think, what is it, about 50 percent within five years that are in education are out of it. And the colleges of education are not producing the people. Now, any of these things are lifelines to really help out. And you know, the dynamics of the classroom, if you've got people that are highly qualified, I mean, they just bring a wealth of experience and all of their ideas. And I hate to use the word tricks, but you know, I mean, in a lot of ways, you are a person like that in front of the classroom, that you can draw this out of kids. And so to expect a principal to do it, I mean, I'm telling you, right there, you've got so many evaluations, you cannot do it, and you need to have these other people helping you out. And anyone that wants a successful school, they're going to seek out and encourage the best to help them out. They're not going to go out and get someone because, and they know who the outstanding teachers are. That's obvious. And they're going to search these people out because they need that. And you know, praise and success works uphill. If your staff's doing a hell of a job for you, you're going to get a lot of credit for it. And so it's very important in that regard. And I just think when you start seeing the lack of teachers, and then we talk about sustainability. You know, when I was at the high school, well, what if this guy only stays two or three years? If that person is an outstanding teacher, and he makes a difference in kids' lives, and he's there for a short period of time, I would rather have people like that than a person who comes in and they're just going through the motions. And believe me, they do make a difference. And I could cite a number of people who were at the high school that left. And I hated to see them leave, but they, in the short time they were there, they made a big difference. And those are the type of people we want to keep. And we want to encourage them because they get all of that experience. And in the end, what we ought to be doing is, once they have mastered this and done a real good job, those are the people that you want as a pool for future administrators. And so, you know, I just think this is a no-brainer. Now, you can develop the things to say, well, how good are these people? You know, that's up to the principal and the people running the program. And you can measure all that. But I'm passionate about this type of a thing, especially when I hear on the state news that you don't have enough teachers in, and by that I mean qualified teachers in the classroom, and 400, 500 of them leave within 30 days. And you know, Havasu, we've got a lot of real good people come up here. We don't keep them all, but boy, I'll tell you what, I think the district works real hard over the years. I think our teachers and our principals do a real good job, and so I'm in favor of programs like this.
I think one of the problems here is we all agree that it's a good program. The only thing I'm bringing up is that in any good program, any good football team, there's problems you have to address. You have to be careful of it. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
And making the assumption, by the way, that well-qualified mentors make better teachers is a pretty wide assumption. It really is. I'm just saying.
You know, I've seen it when you have a highly qualified teacher going there and you're giving these people advice and they, you know, everyone recognizes excellence. And I don't care whether it's doctors or lawyers or whatever, they know who the outstanding people are. And when you have those people helping you out, it just makes a lot of difference. And then, and like you say, your concern is you want to have, you want measurement so that we get the results. And I'm sure Mr. Gardner wants that too because he wants to see, anyone that, you know, knows what they're doing, they want to have measurement to see, how well are we doing on this? Is it making a difference?
Teachers have to be recommended for that mentorship. It's based on their performance in the classroom. And that's important to understand. So it's not just a teacher saying, I want to be a mentor. They have to be recommended by the building administration.
And this is really not a new program. This is just a grant. We've been playing with mentors at schools, and we've had mentors. We've learned from it for, what, 15 years now, maybe more. So this is kind of the, all coming together in a really good way. And I'm so glad we can give some financial consideration to these mentors. That's really good.
Michelle?
Just one final comment on the sustainability piece. There is exciting news in that at the end of this three-year, we can reapply for the three years again, so we start back at $100,000 in the, potentially the fourth year.
But if for some reason we couldn't get the grant again in three years, we would just go back to Title II.
So what we would do, we would continue our new teacher mentoring program, which we have been doing over the years through Title II. And then what this does is actually provide us, regardless of whether we get the grant again or not, we have this deep training that we've been able to get, and that expertise then lives on with our group. And we've been able to build that team of potential mentors and teacher leaders for the future. So that is a sustainable piece regardless of whether we get the funding or not. It's, in my mind, it's an advantage for us, just for that, just to get that training over the next three years.
I tend to agree with Pat. I think it's a no-brainer. It's just the administration of it. As I said, you seem to have a handle on it. I only wanted to bring these things up so people were aware of it. That's all.
And I think Brad said it pretty clearly already, that having the questions helps us to look at it. Because we know in our mind what we're thinking, but that doesn't mean all of you know what we're thinking and what we thought about in the preparation of it, and so that helps us to.
And I want, the board members that asked for the table of this item, I appreciate your guidance there. I think what I was thinking in hindsight is I wanted to honor the work that went into this. Because we got this in November. We looked at the due date, you know, January 30th, and we wanted to have this available in December, so it was kind of a, I need to honor their efforts. Because there was a tremendous amount of work that went into this, but then at the same time... but then at the same time, it wasn't adequate the way it was presented.
Well, I appreciate the backup that we got in the executive summary because that answered a lot of my questions that I had when I wanted it tabled. And then really the only question that I have left now, because I understand that Jenny's really not being pulled out of the classroom 50% of the time, just one more class.
Just one more class.
One more class. But my only question was, in this executive summary, it says, "Teachers with a minimum of three years of teaching experience will participate in pre-candidacy for National Board Certification." And it goes on along there. And my only thought is, with the amount of teachers that are leaving the profession, you know, in the first three years, is, not that this isn't a great program, that's not what I mean, but is this going to be yet another thing that makes teachers go, "Oh, my gosh, this is not for me, it's too much"?
Okay, I'll respond to that one, Christie, if you'd like to chime in.
Okay.
The pre-candidacy section, the third year, it's not overwhelming, first of all. It's 16 hours. We do provide, if you want to say a carrot, we do compensate teachers that are interested in going that route, and it's not mandatory. They will be invited to attend. They don't have to. That's the best I can say. Christie, you want to?
That's exactly what I was going to say. It was going to be optional. It's only 16 hours it takes, it's eight sessions.
Sure. And I read "will" as mandatory and "may" as, and so that was my question. Is this going to be a mandatory?
It's in the statute.
Right.
And they will be compensated for the time as well if they choose to do it.
Thank you. Anybody have any more questions?
Do we need a motion?
No, this is a review. That's okay. All right, item 4.2 is the second reading of our pesticide notice. There hasn't been any changes in that since the last one. Although for three of you, this is your first time with them, actually. And number 5.1 is a request to approve Mrs. Goldberg to continue as our hearing officer for 2017. And I think, I think we've had, I'm sorry if I don't remember if we've had the discussion or not, but we, the board appoints a hearing officer to hear the extended suspensions because the fact that those come to the board on appeal. Item 5.2, this is a recommendation to discontinue the dollar participation fee per student district-wide. Turned out, there was a change in the revised statute that changed it from a definition of extracurricular activities. And if you look on the backup page, it had 48, 49, and 50. This gives you what tax credits can be used for. And on page 50, on line number nine, they have changed the word in defining extracurricular activities as activities that require a fee as to may require a fee. So that allows us to no longer have to charge a fee in order to use a tax credit. Does that make sense here?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is.
I do have a question about that. I cannot recall, it seems that with that participation fee of $1 that we were limited as to what we could spend it for. Denise, do you remember what that was?
It had to be spent on, for instance, at the high school, the student body as a whole, some activity or something that would benefit all students.
All students, okay. And so then, I did read through this, but what can be done then with this money that's left over in this account? Because it will, there's a good bit of money from the participation fee and the auxiliary fund.
So in, I know at various schools, and I don't know if any of your principals want to address that, but those fees are used pretty much throughout the year for student activities. And so I don't believe they have much carryover in the $1 fees. If there's tax credit dollars that are carried over, then those have to go through a process in order to be spent. Then again, they still have to be spent in alignment with the tax credit law. This is just that $1 that we collected beginning of the school year with the tax fee.
Right, I remember that.
Because $12,000 is in that account.
So that is the tax credit fee. And one of the things we wanted to bring this forward is because we are getting ready to put together all of our student handbooks and information for next year, so. And on 5.3, this is a resolution that we're requesting that the board authorize our directors to sign warrants in the absence of a business director right now. I am the only person who can sign warrants. And so we do need to have second signers for those and some of our other business documents. And so this would be a resolution allowing Mr. Gardner and Mrs. Minor and Mrs. Walter to also sign, should we need an additional signature. And that is the end of the action items. The informational items, we have, you'll notice on the back there is a special services monthly board update. One of the areas that we've been talking about and as a response to some of the information from various board members existing and new, is providing an update on a monthly basis from each of our departments to let you know some of the major things that we have been doing and working on. So that if you have questions, if you have things that you want to explore or find out more about, that would be it. So we have our sample one, and Mrs. Walter was our sample for this month to bring out our first monthly update. But we will have them from each of our departments for the future. And that is the agenda.
Do I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I have a second.
Helen Warren?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yep.
John Maston?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.